Wish we had this kind of attendance every week.
It's nice. All right, seven ten. So we're gonna call this, we have a public hearing at seven ten. I'll read this legal notice. First, it was posted in the River East, and this is pursuant to section five oh six of the Portland Town Charter. A public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven ten P. M. in the Buck Foreman Community Room to consider public comments and questions, both orally and in writing, on the requested use of eight hundred fifty thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan to replace engine number two. Public access is also available through Zoom link A dated this third day of November attested Ryan J. Curly, first selectman. So with that, we'll open it up to public comment. If any, if anyone here would like to speak or ask a question, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. There will be a second public hearing at seven twenty for a senior center bus as well. So. Don't everyone jump up at once.
Should we assume everybody sitting here is in favor of it?
That was our sentiment as well. If there's no, is there anything in the chat? Just double check.
No, nothing in the chat.
No, no one wants to comment? We're assuming everyone's in favor.
I, I, I will say that Bob Shay has met with us a couple of times and given us some really good information. He made it very clear on not only the cost, but the creeping costs due to what's going on right now with manufacturing and the fact that there's this replacement plus another truck in the wings eventually needs to be replaced. And we just thought this was an opportunity to replace it without hindering the taxpayers too much. So I want to thank you, Bob, for all your input. You were helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. And just so everyone's aware that, once we close this public hearing, the, the formal vote will take place during the regular Board of Selectmen meeting. So that's when we'll, we'll put the resolution to a vote and, and then, you know, I'm assuming it'll pass, so.
Well, that means maybe we'll have a crowd for the regular meeting, too. At least the first half.
So if there's no, no public comment, we can close the public hearing. So we'll make a note, we don't need to take a formal vote. We'll close the public hearing at seven twelve P. M. And the next public hearing is seven twenty P. M., and that will be on the senior center bus. So, you know, you can just stay tuned for that, and we'll, we'll do this again at seven twenty. Time is seven twenty, so we're going to start this second public hearing this evening. And like the last one, I'll read you the legal notice that was published in the local paper, The River East. Pursuant to section five oh six of the Portland Town Charter, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven twenty P. M. in the Buck Foreman Community Room to consider public comments and questions, both orally and in writing, on the requested use of one hundred twenty thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan to purchase a wheelchair-accessible bus for the senior center. Public access is also available through Zoom link A at portlandct.org dated this third day of November, two thousand and twenty-two, attested Ryan J. Curly, first selectman. So like the last one, we're gonna open this up to public comments, first in person, and then if anyone is with us via Zoom and would like to comment or ask any, or ask a question, or, you know, really, the, the floor is yours. Just state your name and address, and, and please come up to the podium if you have any, any comments on this purchase of the senior center bus. Please come on up. Yeah, right, yeah, to the podium, yep.
All right. My name is Marilyn Hill, and I live in Grandview Farms. And I am sort of a non-paid taxi cab driver for a lot of our residents there. And I really do believe that the town of Portland needs a senior bus, because a lot of times, we share one with the city, or the town of Cromwell, and a lot of times, that one isn't accessible. So it would be really good for the seniors. And since there are a lot of seniors in Portland, I think it would be a good thing to have. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Marilyn.
My name is Ed Gillenhammer. I live at Three Ginger Circle in Grandview Farms, and a beneficiary of my taxi driver here, spends a lot of her time and money shuffling people around to appointments and things. We need a good bus system for the town. The current bus that we share with Cromwell is in need of disrepair, is not always available, and people need the ability to get around to medical appointments. And I would encourage the board to back this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. I, I just want to point out that the, the bus that we would be replacing is currently the two thousand nine van that we received from the Red Cross. We still have a-
Is that the eight seat van?
Yes, that's the, yeah, I went for a ride in that. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty shaky. So I had a little, yeah, Jack took me on a, on a tour of Portland, and you hit some of those bumps on High Street, and you feel them, so.
Oh, 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 the hill street. Like a little one coast to the left.
Yeah, yeah. So we do still, we do still use that, that van or the bus with Cromwell. We split that, but we only get that two weeks of the month. So the other two weeks, we don't have a twelve-passenger van. So this, this purchase would allow us, Lynn, it would help Lynn book more trips. It would help you guys get more rides, and, and it would help, you know, the senior center quite a bit.
And correct me if I'm wrong, they also indicated that the current Portland van will, can only take one wheelchair individual. And once they're in there, it's hard to get anybody else in. What they're looking will take multiple wheeled individuals, correct?
Yes, the, the two thousand nine version only, that's a van, and that takes one. And yes, correct.
So I think it benefits everybody.
Is there anyone else for public comment here? Is there anyone in the chat? Going once? All right, with that, at seven twenty-four, we'll close the, the public hearing. And I just want to thank everyone here for both, for coming out tonight. It's great to see, you know, people involved in the process and, and, you know, and showing your support. So thank you for coming. And the regular Board of Selectmen meeting will start at seven thirty.
Recording stopped.
All right. Good evening. The time is seven thirty, and I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting of November second, two thousand and twenty-two. Has everyone gotten a chance to review those? If so, would someone make a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mike. Any errors, changes, or omissions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? An extension? Motion carries. And I do want to point out that Mike Fernandez is with us on Zoom this evening. Mike, can you hear us? Okay. So you can vote, too. Okay. All right. With that, do I have a motion to approve tonight's, or accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mike. Any extension? Motion carries. Under Communications and Correspondence, I have two things that I wanted to share with everyone. One is that our Portland High School girls soccer team are currently competing right now in the Class S semifinals, and I think that's going on at Lyman Memorial Stadium in Waterbury. So I know Charles, our superintendent, is here with us this evening, and you, we both couldn't be there, but we wish them, we wish them success in tonight's game. And so it'll be a good game. The, the other item I wanted to bring to your attention was I heard from Alan Sabins, who, as you know, is our consultant with C S W Energy, and this is on the ongoing project to get solar panels at our transfer station. And it looks like they are almost done with their RFP, the RFP that this board authorized should be done by the end of either this week or next week. And then they're looking for a completion of a, a closeout of that RFP by the end of the year. So we, they were asking what our timetable was for Board of Selectmen meetings, and I did tell them that we would be open to a special meeting if, because, as you know, timelines are tight with this, and there's a lot of hoops to jump through. So I just want to let the board know there may be a need for a special meeting, but I'm hope, you know, we're gonna try to not let that happen. But if we need it, we'll do it. And that's all I have for Communications and Correspondence. So we'll move to item six, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment? Is there anyone in the chat?
No, not in the chat.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to old business, and it's our second meeting of the month, which means it's our monthly report from the Committee on Solidarity. Mike, do you know if anyone is joining us from the Committee on Solidarity?
I'm not bringing any reason, or anything.
Okay. All right. Do you, okay. So with that, we'll move on to the next item. Sound good?
Sure.
The next item is item B under Old Business. This is the American Rescue Plan Funds, and this is the senior center bus. So we did, everyone was here. We held a public hearing on this at seven twenty P. M. And I know this board, we've, we've talked a lot about the need for a new bus for the senior center. That would be wheelchair-accessible, that would, this would allow two wheelchair seniors, and also up to twelve, maybe even fourteen passengers, depending on the bus. But this is, you know, as we've talked a lot about this, we know there's a need for it, and, you know, I personally feel it's a, it's a good use of the American Rescue Plan Funds, because we would have to replace this anyway. Anybody else have any?
And in agreement.
I'm, I'll offer to make the resolution if-
Sure, yes.
You're good.
Yeah.
All right, resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, entitled American Rescue Plan Funds Senior Center Bus. Whereas the Town of Portland is in receipt of American Rescue Plan Funds, and whereas up to ten million dollars of A R P A funds can be used for a wide range of expenses due to the final rule regarding revenue loss, and whereas the town has a need to purchase a wheelchair-accessible bus for the safe transportation of seniors, and whereas the cost of the wheelchair-accessible bus is estimated to be at one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Portland hereby approves the use of A R P A funds up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the purchase of a senior center bus.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Sean. Any discussion? Further discussion?
I think this is just long overdue. You know, the folks deserve it. I think the, the COVID really brought to light, and when a lot of folks couldn't get to the doctors and had, had doctor's appointments and other things, there's a need, and we deserve it, and they deserve it. We need to make the change.
Good point. Yeah, Lynn tells me every day, the, the demand on our senior center has skyrocketed now. The, you know, our seniors need to get to their appointments, and they gotta, you know, health is important, and, and this helps them get there. So with that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of utilizing American Rescue Plan Funds for the purchase of a senior center bus, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. All right. The next item on tonight's agenda is the item C under Old Business, American Rescue Plan Funds, Replacing Engine Number Two. Again, we held a public hearing this evening at seven ten PM. And we've talked a lot. Bob, I want to thank Chief Shea for coming. I don't know how many meetings you came to, but we asked you a lot of questions. And you, and you were, you know, gracious to come to all the meetings, and you always got the information that we needed. And again, this is one of those things that we have to, we're going to have to replace no matter what. And if we can use federal funds to do that without impacting our mill rate, without impacting, you know, the taxpayers, I, I think that's a win for the town. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, read the resolution. Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, American Rescue Plan Funds, Replacement of Engine Number Two. Whereas the Town of Portland is in receipt of American Rescue Plan Funds, and whereas up to ten million dollars of ARPA funds can be used for a wide range of expenditures due to the final rule regarding revenue loss, and whereas the town has a need to replace the current engine number two, that as it approaches the end of its life cycle, and whereas the cost of replacement is estimated to be at eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Portland hereby approves the use of ARPA funds up to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of engine number two.
Sean, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Ralph? Any discussion? Further discussion?
No.
I just want to thank the fire department. You know, there's many in attendance. Thank you for all you guys do every day on the town's behalf. We owe you, you know, and certainly this is one way, you know, we can, we can, you know, help make sure that you have the tools that you need to get the job done. So with that, I will call for the question. All those in favor of utilizing American Rescue Plan Funds for the replacement of engine number two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Under Old Business, moving on, appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments this evening? All right. So we'll move on to item A, which is under New Business. And Superintendent Britton is here, as well as Bob Shea. Discussion of supplemental appropriation for HVAC, for an HVAC grant for the middle school, high school complex. If you want to come up, Charles, and, and also Laurel's here as well, the Board of Ed Chair. So thank you, Laurel, for coming. And if you want to...
Charles, you drove him right out. Usually you hold the line.
So, um, thank you for having me tonight. First, I want to start by apologizing for the very truncated timeline that we're on with respect to this request. And I understand that this is outside of the normal capital improvement and the budget development cycle. Normally, these requests would come through that process, but this is out of my control. This is sort of, I call it once in a lifetime. I've never seen anything like it in my career. Usually, our state bureaucracy's moved very slowly. State bureaucracy in this case is moving very quickly. And they are giving us until December first to get all of the information and all of the engineering schematics and quotes and resolutions that we need lined up. So if everything works out tonight, which I, I hope it does, you can trust it. I'll eat turkey, watch a little football, and then be writing a grant over the Thanksgiving break so that we could get everything done. So here's what the situation is. During the last legislative session, the state legislature approved a hundred and fifty million dollars in earmarket for heating, venting, and air conditioning upgrades in public schools across Connecticut. This was done, of course, in, in recognition of COVID and the importance of indoor air quality, keeping it clean, keeping it well circulated and vented, which of course helps reduce the spread of disease, right? So two weeks ago, we finally got the grant guidelines. And we are eligible as a town for a fifty-one percent reimbursement for any HVAC grant projects that we are going to propose. So all of our schools need HVAC work. As you know, the three elementary schools don't have any VAC in the HVAC. They have heating, but they don't have really any venting or air conditioning. And the secondary school is the only complex in the district that has heating, venting, and air conditioning. But the venting and air conditioning part of it is in need of a lot of work. I'll let Bob talk to you about some of the specifics of it. I'm not an HVAC expert. I know he's done a ton of work to help understand the cause of the problem. All I know is it's really uncomfortable in there in the, in the summer when the air conditioning system runs, because the air that the air conditioning system puts out is very cold and wet, which creates all kinds of problems with respect to, you know, having to replace the ceiling tiles, because they get mildewy and it's slippery, and it's just not comfortable air to breathe. I'll let Bob come up in a minute and, and talk to you, come on up, Bob, talk to you about what causes that and, you know, the two pipe versus four pipe system. What Bob will tell you is that to fix the system the way it should be fixed, which would be to put in the four pipe system, would be very expensive and very costly for us. But I want to thank Bob. He and our consultants at Perfectem have another solution that involves replacing our current air handling units with new units that have heating systems and economizers in them that will dry the air and warm it before it pushes it out into the school. So why don't I let Bob talk to you a little bit about what the problem is and what the solution is that we're going to propose or, or ask for tonight?
So here I am again. Apologize for that in advance. But, you know, spent an awful lot of time since June when we were first notified that there was, it looked like this grant was going to be approved, but it just took a while to actually come out. And when it did, we were very surprised, as Charles mentioned, on the deadline. It's probably the tightest grant that I've ever seen, and I've been looking and doing grants for over twenty-five years. So that's the difficult part. But, so we started, and we were lucky enough to have a pretty comprehensive plan and study that was done at the schools that I was able to kind of trench through for weeks to see some of the items that were identified. And it really lined up with exactly what this grant is all about, improving the air quality of our schools for certainly everyone that uses them. So the situation at the secondary school is, yes, it's an eighteen or almost twenty-year-old school. And he talked about the piping system. The school is run in two different ways. We have a chiller that takes care of air conditioning on a portion of the school. It's a two-pipe system. It doesn't have any dehumidification. So really, that's the issue. The school itself is in a somewhat damp area. It has an envelope or an environment that actually has a high concentration of humidity normally. And our rooftop units, which control the other majority of the system that we have, don't have any dehumidification either. So for years, we've been using dehumidification, mobile stations, running them all summer long to keep the humidity down, keep the chance for mold and, you know, bacteria and stuff like that from growing. I saw it firsthand for the first time this year. We run over a dozen commercial dehumidifiers in certain areas of the school during the most humid portions of the summer, which is a little labor intensive for the staff to keep them going, to watch them. And then we're also making sure that we're monitoring on a daily basis that we don't have any of those concerns. So it's a very labor intensive situation. So actually seeing that kind of pointed me towards a direction that, you know, what is the most feasible way for us to do this, to get, to start getting some dehumidification into the school? It's not going to solve the entire problem, and it's certainly going to make a big improvement. And that would be the seventeen existing rooftop units that we have there. There is no dehumidification in them. They're just a bond, probably, well, the units are probably much older than eighteen years. They've been in service for a little over eighteen years. They are basically ending or coming to the end of their service life. We're having multiple issues with them. You, you would think that you would get, you know, twenty to twenty-five years. That's really what the lifespan is of a rooftop unit. But I think that we're experiencing, and, and our contractors are saying that we're experiencing some of the failures that we're having now because they're working so hard to do really what is difficult for them to do. So the heating, you know, just, we just replaced one. Unfortunately, we were in a position where we had to, and that purchase was made over a year ago, but it finally, it took a year to get a rooftop. Think about that. So it's lucky that we have seventeen, but there are some areas of the schools that get difficult to manage when it's not running. So with that said, you know, we looked into the designs. I reached out to our contractors and I said, you know, what is the best solution for replacing the rooftops? And the new technology is there. It consists of dehumidification in that particular rooftop unit. It can be switched out and installed. There's not much engineering that is needed, because it's basically a replacement from old to new. There is new technology involved, and it's got economizers that take up, they help with the difference in energy, you have to remember. Think about your library, and we've talked about that many times before. You use your heat in the summer, because that's what, so your energy costs, you know, you'll see some increases to do that, because you're heating to dry the air before you're putting it into the space. So we're hoping by doing that, it's going to make a, a large improvement with the, the troubles that we're having, keeping up with that envelope and the damage and things that we're seeing that it's doing. So, you know, with all that work that we have done, we think we've come up with a good plan. We think feasibly, it's a good number. You know, like the chiller and the piping system for the balance of the school is another discussion for the future. Something will eventually have to be done there. But I think the areas that the rooftop units are covering are the areas, most of the areas are of our concern. So that's what we're, we're looking to do. So our details and the, the difficult job to write this with all the parameters and the restrictions and the requests that are in the grant with such a short period of time is, is difficult. So, you know, we are trying, and we're using great controls that we have. They're not an automated control that will control dampers that is available, but we control the damper intakes to reduce the humidity on a manual basis. We're basically, I'm on the computer every day looking at our HVAC system. And it's consists of about seven pages of units, and I'm looking at temperatures in all the spaces that the students are in, the hallways, the occupied spaces, making sure that in the morning at seven AM that we're coming up to temperature. We don't have any failures. Today, we had two rooftop units down. It was the first thing that I saw at seven fifteen this morning. So we initially went up. We tried to reboot our system. We, we used the, the system that we have from our contractor that we, we've had installed for years and that we pay a service charge for. And we weren't able to do that. They were basically locked out. They have some issues. So most of the day, we worked on those and finally got those running this afternoon. But we're experiencing age, as like anything else. So the opportunity again for grant money is wonderful if they're going to give us the opportunity to make our air quality better, the atmosphere better that we're learning in, you know, as well as basically save the building from damage due to excess moisture and just trying to remove that humidity. So that's what we're trying to do in a nutshell. Right now, we're doing everything we can. We're shutting dampers in the summer to not take that humidity from the outside in, but we're still having those experiences, because I think the envelope is just, it's a consistently moist area. So what we're doing is we're recirculating that moisture, because we're closing the outside dampers, and we're just using our inside dampers in those humid months, and we're not really drying the air. So that's really what we have to get to. So that's as deep as I get into HVAC over the past month and a half, you know? I'm used to building things like bridges, but, you know, so I learned an awful lot from all our players, including the companies that work with us on a daily basis to handle our controls. So I think that this is where we need to be.
I have a question, Bob. Was this something that was not properly engineered when we built this facility? Or was this something that the technology wasn't there to meet with the upcoming demands of encapsulating the new buildings and not letting them breathe?
Well, I think I could talk on, I mean, the rooftops, I'm not sure what the technology was eighteen years ago as far as dehumidification being involved in that particular system. I'm sure maybe it was available. I don't know if the humidity levels or the moisture levels up at that complex were known prior to that. But I do know that the chillers were, you know, a piping system has been available for years. I think it was just, it might have been a cost situation at that time where they didn't do the four piping system, and that was, because I believe, looking back, that there were some of those proposals involved, but it could have been a money thing at that time when the school was done. But being that long ago, Sean.
So are the grants like, as you said, this is a rare opportunity where they have money allocated? So it's not something that comes up every year, not something that comes up on a regular basis? Given that, and also given the new equipment, should it get approved? How much savings does the new equipment, is that just a hard cost of it? How much estimated savings would it, are they more efficient systems? Are they doing more, so they'll cost about the same to, in terms of the energy costs? Like, what's the balance before and after, let's say it's done?
Well, I don't think that you're going to see a huge, I don't think you're going to see a savings at all in energy. You're going to see more efficiency. The economizers that are part of these systems, as I've been told, are going to do their best to offset some of the additional cost. But you have to understand that you're going to be, you're be, you'll be running them in twofold situation where you're going to be heating as well as you're providing air conditioning. So there's going to be, and, and the units are much more efficient, for sure. So you're hopefully, but, you know, I'm not, I don't think that in particular, you're looking to do both. I think the, the, the concentration on this is the actual climate of air that you're trying to improve. And, you know, we all know what humidity is going to do.
When we rebuilt that, and we had no air conditioning in that high school, and we changed everything, is we did this basically when we, so twenty years down the road or whatever, now we're looking at eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to fix something, which I understand that has to be done, but I'm just wondering where we're going to be in three, four, or five years from now with the way we can improve this? Because I know, not only dealing with houses, but I'm facing the same thing with bringing in fresh air, because the envelope is so tight now, and every year that's changing, and we have to meet up with the demand. So that's, that's, that's one thing I'm thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, everything that's, you know, what sits in front of you is, it's a critical need, and it's, it's, it's going to be in front of you in, in the near future if it's not now. We just replaced one. We have two that we've been working on all day. We know we have one that's out of service. It can't be repaired. It lost its main shaft, and the cost to, the cost to repair the rooftop unit is more than the percentage that you'd want to just replace it. So when it gets over a fifty percent margin or whatever, it's not, it's not smart to repair something in eighteen years. So those exist now, Sean, and the chiller, which is at, it's, it's, you know, the, the replacement value of the chiller is four hundred thousand dollars, just the chiller, not the piping portion of that for the other balance. So that's probably one of those bond or future issues where if you're going to be making changes, where that stuff would be incorporated.
Well, that's another thing I'm thinking.
You're taking that out of it.
Is we're doing this major project down the road, we're hoping, right? With consolidating our schools, do we maybe wait a few years? When this project comes along, know where we stand, and put this in with a bond with the other project?
What's going to be all the money in a bond, less the grant loss, if we have the potential of getting the grant? So that's what stands in front of you, the potential of getting that money versus what we would have to lay out. And the fact that, I'll guarantee you, before any of that comes to fruition, where you're going to get shovels in the ground and state making those changes, you're going to be replacing rooftop units at the tune of fifty thousand dollars each.
So I would suggest that the work that this facility study, we're really focused on the elementary schools. So I would suggest that the work that this facility study, we're really focused on the elementary school.
All right, I understand that.
Yeah, we're definitely focused on the elementary schools and we still have several pieces in the puzzle before we're ready to bring forward any proposals. We know that there's work that has to be done at the secondary school. This is part of that. This will chip away at that. And in a minute, as soon as you're done with the technical side of it, I'll talk to you about what makes this such a good deal now. Because this grant funding isn't going to be available in the future. That the fifty percent reimbursement, in addition to the, in our, the board side, ESSER funds, it's here now, it has to be spent this year or next year. So we see this as a good opportunity to capitalize on funds that need to be spent that are clearly designed for this project and tap into, hopefully by the grant well, the grant funding that is available now and otherwise we have to make these decisions before December one. Certainly, if this were just, you know, taxpayer, all on the taxpayer's own money, would it be potentially wiser to go live into a bond in the future? And kind of, you know, do what Bob's been doing, which is hold the current air handling units together as best we could? I would say so, but this is a gift horse we don't want to work in the mouth.
I understand, I just think I'm.
Can I just, can we just, Charles, I think it would be helpful if you explained to the board what you were proposing as far as the, as far as the numbers, as far as, you know, what, you know, I think, you know, the ask to the board was, was three, do you have that number, three hundred?
I do. So where, here's where, here's where we are and things are still a little uncertain. I'm imagining I might get a text any minute now with one additional piece of information. But last night, the Board of Education voted to authorize me and Stephanie, the business manager, and Bob to apply two hundred thousand dollars of the COVID relief funds that schools received, right? If you'll remember last year, I asked not to apply that to build a cliff in this year's budget, but to hold off on it. At that time, I was asking primarily because we didn't know if we were out of a pandemic. I think at this point, we're comfortable saying we're out of a pandemic and we have that, those funds available to us. And one of the, there are three reasons or opportunities for us to spend that per the guidelines of it. One is to help students recover learning loss. We earmark money for that in terms of some of our interventionist and summer learning programs. Two is to help students with their social, emotional and mental health needs. We do have some of that money earmarked for a school social worker. And the third reason is to improve indoor air quality, which is exactly what this would accomplish. So I think we're doing good faith by the grant and the board did vote unanimously last night to authorize that two hundred thousand. Now, I would like to have said that two hundred thousand goes towards Portland's forty-nine percent of this project. Unfortunately, per the guidelines, that two hundred thousand has to go off the top number, right? So the top number to replace all seventeen units is eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, right? So discount that to six hundred and seventy-three thousand because we now have access to two hundred thousand available through the ESSER funds, right? The one question we don't have an answer to right now is whether the American Rescue Plan funds on the town side could also be commingled with this, right? We don't know that yet. We do have a call into the Department of Administrative Services at the state and we haven't heard back yet. That might be another pool that you might consider looking at, just like you purchased tonight the fire truck and the van. This might be another way to put funding towards this project. But we have to, I wouldn't, just caution us to wait until we hear from the Department of Administrative Services at the state about whether we could do that. So we're down to six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to replace all seventeen units. Oh, by the way, we don't have to replace all seventeen of them if we don't get all of that funding. We can start chipping away at as many as we can. Is everybody with me so far? So if we're down to six hundred and seventy-three, we can apply for up to fifty-one percent of that out of this one-time grant funding that we're being pressed to apply for before December first. That would put the town's forty-nine percent share to three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So if you authorize tonight three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, that would be the forty-nine percent we would need to then go and ask the state for, out of this grant, the three hundred and forty-three thousand, which would get us to the total eight hundred and seventy-three thousand amount. I just threw a lot of numbers at you because they may need me to unpack those in any way.
No, I'm pretty good.
Pretty good. So if you, if you were so inclined, certainly three hundred and twenty-nine thousand would be great and appreciated. But I would suggest we'll take anything you can give us. So if you gave us a hundred thousand, we could go ask for a hundred thousand. I'm just thinking forty-nine percent fifty, I'm kind of going fifty-fifty. Are you following me so far? So my, my ask tonight is whatever you can contribute to help us with this project so I know how much fuel I have in the tank, how much funding I have in the bank to go apply for the matching amount from the state. With me so far? Up to what I need is the three twenty-nine. But I'm here with my cup and hand, asking for whatever I can get so that at least I can complete the grant, know what I have available to match the two hundred thousand, whatever you're comfortable contributing. With potentially a follow-up discussion with Ryan to come once we find out if we can co-mingle S R funds and American Rescue Plan funds, which is the other piece we don't know yet because we haven't gotten a phone call back. By the way, every superintendent, first select person and mayor of the state is calling the state with these questions right now because we're all under this incredibly aggressive timeframe. And we've all asked the state to reconsider making us take our rescue plan funds off the top, but instead allowing us to use that as part of our matching funds, right? But that would need to change very quickly because grants do December first, which in my mind is sort of obnoxiously quick.
Charles, I have a question then. Is there anything else that's already scheduled in your budget that your ARPA funds would cover?
Ask the question one more time.
Is there something else in your budget that you can use your money, that your two hundred thousand for and then pay two hundred thousand dollars of town money towards the system?
So we only have the rest of this year and next year to spend that money, right? If we don't spend it on this, certain, I would suggest, and we would work with the buildings and grounds and to use that money for capital improvements. I'm not comfortable building a cliff in the budget by taking that and subsidizing the budget in any way, right? I mean, personnel or other costs. I would, I would look to use that money for a project like this to improve the indoor air quality. We already have funding set aside for clinicians, summer learning programs and help students recover learning loss. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with that two hundred thousand dollars, whether we get this grant or not, being used to begin purchasing as many as we can get of the air handling units. I think that that's a.
But that's what I'm saying, for, to count the two hundred thousand towards the town's fifty percent.
Yeah, it'd be as if we could.
Can't you just?
It's not allowed.
It's not allowed.
That's not allowed with the rules, so.
I understand that, but you can't pay for something else and take the money from something else and say that's the town's fifty percent.
Oh, I see, I see what you're.
Doing an exchange of money is what you're saying. Because if there's other programs that that money can be used for that we've already budgeted, you can pay for it with that two hundred thousand and take that money allocated in the budget already and say, count that towards the town's fifty percent.
I'd have to, I'd have to think about that a little bit. I, and so what you're saying is spend ARPA money, just spend LEA money towards this so we can count it to the fifty percent and then subsidize that with the.
It's the same amount of money that's a wash, it's just where you're taking it from.
Let me process that.
So and while you process it, I just want to point out what the, so the, the ask for the board is we don't have a pot of money budgeted in our budget for this. The, if the board felt inclined to provide funding, it would have to come from fund balance. And so right now is, it is somewhat of an unusual time of year to do a fund balance transfer. To my knowledge, we don't, I, I don't know of a time where we've, we've done that in the month of November. Right now, our auditors are performing the audit and we really don't even know where our numbers are going to shake out. So that, and I told Charles when we met the other day, we've discussed this. I personally would not recommend to the board to, to set aside three hundred thirty thousand dollars from fund balance. I, I, my suggestion was, when we met, was that we could talk about do, funding half of the project. And we could, so I, you know, if you take the cost, which is eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, you divide it by two, you take two hundred thousand dollars off the top and then you take forty-nine percent of that, it comes out to about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which would be the town share. And I said I'd be comfortable around a hundred twenty. Even that, I'm still, you know, I still wrestle with that and that's, so that would be my ask to the board. I want to know what your thoughts are. I, I think what Bob and what Charles are saying is that, you know, we could be strategic and replace some of the units and still get a benefit to the, to the air quality of the school. We don't necessarily have to do all of them now. Or, you know, we can also wait. I, I don't know. I've been wrestling with the, the fund balance question and, and that's kind of one of the, the things that I've been wrestling with. So I guess my question is with a hundred and twenty thousand, Charles, would you be able to still fund the whole project? If the, if.
So that's, that's an interesting question. And the way it would work, if I weren't able to do that, you know, pay for other things with S R money and then use LEA funds for, so we can get the added matching share. And I, I want to process that a little bit, not, I want to think about that before I make any commitments to it. But if you tonight were to say, we'll put a hundred and twenty thousand in, you know, I'm, I have had conversations with the board and with Bob and with Stephanie about looking to what we call Fund Eleven, right? Which is really our emergency fund, right? Like that's, much like your fund balance, that's what we, we fund each year. And we largely use it when things like gas lines pop or, you know, we don't, we want, we want to be very careful about ever draining that. There's about two hundred thousand or so in there. I wish Stephanie here should give me the exact number. But maybe we could turn that, if you gave us one twenty, into something like two twenty, right? Which would then, we would then be able to ask for two twenty from the state. One, two twenty plus two twenty plus two hundred doesn't quite get us to the eight seventy-three, but gets us way down the road of maybe replacing twelve or thirteen of the air handling units. And that alone, like any number that we replace with these economizers and the heating units, especially if we're strategic about identifying the areas, particularly the middle school second floor, that is particularly uncomfortably cold and wet in the, in those months. We would identify the, the air handling units that service that part of the building and replace those first with a longer-term capital improvement goal of replacing all of them.
I, I am, you know, a hundred percent on board of what you guys are trying to do. My big thing is the unknown of what we have in fund balance. And like you don't want to go into your Fund Eleven and strip that and you know, have an idea of what you have. Unfortunately, we were all put up against the wall with this quick turnaround time on this, on this grant. And it, it reminds me, only first, last winter, when we came up with the solar, we had to step back from that because it was just such a quick turnaround that we had to. That is the only thing that scares me is do we or do we not have that money? And if we give you that money, do we have anything else after we commit? And then you write the grant and we're not able to give you that money. And then it puts you in a position where then you have to make some changes in the end.
Yeah, I mean, so part of the requirements of the grant are that I include the resolution, the action. Literally the, the minutes or the resolution that you pass saying to the state, that money is committed and it is there for you to match, Steve.
Right.
So it would have to be that, it would have to be you, it's, you've identified it and have reallocated it. And by the way, many district, districts are not going to pursue this because unlike Portland, some towns have to go to bonding measures in order to get something like this passed. I think here, in talking with Ryan, there are town meetings and ways that, without having to go to a vote. But that might work in our advantage because I think that might preclude some districts from going after this hundred and fifty million, which would then, it's a competitive grant, right? Would, which would, I think, potentially put us in a better position to get it. But I understand the concern.
And I just want to point out though, as Charles had mentioned, this is a very tight timetable and I don't know which way, you know, the board is going to go. But I did want to point out that if we were to move forward with this, I asked Michelle, well, first of all, we did draft a resolution, which is before you. And I also asked Michelle to publish in the River East a legal notice for a public hearing and a special town meeting, which would have to be held prior to December first. So if the board chooses to move forward with that, that will be in this Friday's paper. The deadline was earlier today, so we wanted to make sure that that was in. Whether we have to cancel that or not, I mean, that's up to the board to decide. But just so you know that that's the option. I mean, it is a very tight timetable. Certainly, we want, you know, good air quality at the school.
Brian, with the auditors here now, if we were to go for that December first public hearing, would we by that time have an idea if we got the cash?
No, we're not, no, the audit's going to be all of December and, you know, they're in for quite some time and we don't get the report, I think, until about March where it's done. That's why when we do, when we do balance transfers, it's typically at the end of the fiscal year. You remember, we did that this past year for, I know police private duty had gone over because of bridge construction and there, I think we, and we did do a transfer to the Board of Education for the track replacement. We, we had given two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the track. And, and so that, full disclosure, we, we may, we don't know still where the numbers for the track are going to shake out. And right now, we have seven hundred fifty thousand dollars allocated for the track, five hundred of that from the state bond and two hundred fifty thousand dollars that we.
And we, and some discussions indicated there may be more work on that than we had anticipated, correct?
Correct. So that is, that is something to consider, that there may, there may be a need as, you know, depending on where we, where we come out with that, to revisit that.
Yeah, I think the, the situation is if you, if the deadline was June first, then we'd know pretty well and I think we'd feel all comfortable where our fund balance roughly would be. But the problem you have, you know, you're facing a winter and we really don't, this is the, now winters and summer, everything's extreme, conditions are extreme. So we hopefully have a mild winter. We don't have anything that kills us in terms of funding. But you just, you just don't know. It's, it's so far out. And, and I was thinking about it, I, I just don't, in my terms, being on the Board of Selectmen, I just don't remember this big a number that you're trying to, to resolve. And I was thinking, even going back to when I just followed the Board of Selectmen. I totally support the strategy of what you're doing and it is. You really want to take advantage of a rare opportunity we have here. But with the, you know, like you say, we may be here in a couple of months talking about the track and, oh, you need two hundred thousand more for the track and, you know, it's, that's the only thing. The uncertainty of what we, we really do have floating around is the challenge with the number.
Oh, wait for me.
Yeah, I got you.
Yep.
Okay, a quick question, a couple of questions. How, how long have you really been on the school? Would you say you're, um, you know?
The entire six years I've been here, for sure.
Then my next question is, the government recommended changing the air control. Why don't you change that air conditioning, perfect grant, I've got five out, with the humidation? Why don't you go ahead and, um, tell them to do that? Tell them what you actually need. Is there a place there? That doesn't do it, humidation, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I'd, I'd have to go back to Perfect Temp and ask them that. I think that the recommendation from Perfect Temp right along has been, put the four pipe system in, right? That, that, that's the fix, that's the, the ultimate way to fix this problem is to do that. Now, that's millions of dollars, right? So I don't, I don't, I think that the, the idea of replacing the air handling units with these came out of us scrambling when we learned that a hundred and fifty million dollars was available and Bob doing, I think, really excellent work, trying to figure out what we can do short of, I mean, if we can't get together a hundred and twenty thousand, there's no way we're gonna get together five hundred thousand, right? So, you know, I don't wanna call this a shortcut. I call this the most cost effective way to address the, the problem of the humidity as quickly and efficiently as possible, up to the point where someday a bonding might include actually doing what should've been done twenty years ago, which is putting a four pipe system in.
I have one question.
I have to defer to Perfect Temp and HVAC technicians, I definitely never studied that in school.
I'm gonna say, you're monitoring how to use air conditioners, if a whole new control logic is probably running. Physically, you, you have to sort of start installing and control logic for Bob to be able to monitor and release that, directly. And why are they down, down, well, either things that family will open, I don't really know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Bob, do you have any comment on that?
No, no, I think, I think he's right, we did, we did discuss some of that. We are making, uh, we are currently making a thirty-two thousand dollar improvement to the controls that we currently have, but there could be some differences. Our control unit, um, is not speaking to a bunch of our units and our contractor are, is currently working on that and that's a big project. That's, you know, we're, we invested over thirty thousand dollars in that. So that's gonna be a no, new control system, but I'm just not sure, Mike, if that is going to do, what you're saying that it might not do, because we, I've kind of been led in the direction that we should be fine with that existing system to be able to, and like I said before, you're right, it's not an automated system, we manually go in and make those changes, temperature controls as well as damper controls, and that would remain the same because the control system that was, um, basically sold to us was the one to replace the existing one we have. So, yeah, I mean, there could be, you know, we went through the engineering, we didn't seem to see as far as the hookups and the change outs, that there would be too much other than what they proposed in the labor. But, you know, those are the numbers that they, they worked on with us for over a month and worked with Train on these new types of systems. So, yeah, those are, those are good points, I can only basically go from what I've been told. And I do know that the control system that's currently being worked on, um, as we speak, just waiting some parts, is going to make what we do better. We can communicate better with the, the systems that are there now that we're failing to be able to talk to and be able to control from our computer where we have to get on the roof and do manual, pay labor for that, for our contractor as well. So, um, I think these retrofit with that controls, I just know that they're not automated like, you know, Mike had mentioned, so. Yeah, so the, yeah, we've had duck cleaning, um, and duck cleaning, Mike, is, um, we didn't get it done this year. Uh, but I knew that, that's a cycle that needs to be done and it's, and it's not cheap. You know, you're, you're looking at, you know, the numbers of duck cleaning, which, you know, is part of this year's budget, hopefully in the discussion, by doing phases of duck cleaning in three different phases for the size of that school. If you were to do all three phases at once, it's seventy-five thousand dollars for cleaning duck work. That just tells you the size of the school, the amount of duck work and the things that need to be cleaned. So we're looking to phase that in. And the duck work cleaning, as I've been told by the professionals, is good to do every three years. So if you get on a cycle where you can do those phases every three years, you're starting to do that. But you're absolutely right, Mike, but we've addressed and taken a close look at that too as well. Because you're right, you're putting new systems in with duck work that's dirty, could have effects of the moisture that's been there forever, um, those have to be addressed.
Bob, I have one question, I know you're new to the position. If we've been looking at this for so long, I don't remember seeing HVAC improvements of the school system in the capital budget for, you know, projected years out.
They just got cut. Yeah, I went back quite a ways to look at old capital stuff. HVAC improvements has always been in, and, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna see them going way back for certainly our older schools, and I saw that, we've made some of those. You know, this board has agreed to make some of those. But the technology in the older schools is a little different, those are your boilers and your furnaces. They don't have air conditioning. They don't have this particular, they, they just sweat to death for two months and those environments are difficult. You know, I'm working with a contractor right now, looking at what it's gonna cost to air condition, um, the Brownstone Intermediate School. And they're starting at numbers of two million dollars. And the biggest number of that is seven hundred thousand to change the entire electrical system in the building because it cannot handle an AC unit. So that's the grid coming off of Main Street that would have to be done first. So, you know, these are just huge numbers. But this particular complex being the newest, there to stay for quite a while is where we kinda targeted our efforts for the moisture side of it, so. But yeah, Mike makes some, some great, you know, hopefully I hit a few of those because I know some of those were brought up with even our conversations with ESC and with Perfect Temp and, you know, people that run our controls and stuff like that, so, yeah.
So, I guess the, there's a couple of questions before the board. One is, you know, I did draft a resolution, uh, we don't, and in that was the, the maximum amount of dollars that I would, that I would feel comfortable allocating to, you know, and that's, and that's flying blind with our fund balance, you know, and that's, and even that, you know, that's, that's as high as, and, you know, I wanna be cautious if we were to move forward with that. You know, you guys can tell me, you know, the fund balance is, is where I struggle with it. I, I do think that, you know, it's a, it's a great grant, I think it's worth, uh, you know, it's always worth improving our air quality for, in our schools. How we get the money to do that in November is, is where I'm, you know, so that's why I, that's where I got the one hundred twenty thousand, was funding, you know, half.
I gotta say, I agree with, with what Ralph said. You know, we've already given money for the track. We don't know if they're coming back next year for more money for the track. And whatever number we approve, it's like writing a check and you don't know what's in your checking account. We don't know what's there. So if we say, okay, we're gonna give you a hundred and twenty thousand, but then we find out in a couple of months, okay, you don't have a hundred and twenty thousand, now we gotta figure it out.
We guarantee it.
Yeah.
I, I will, I will say that, it's not, we, we are in good financial shape.
I'm just saying, if, if we knew what numbers were and we could look at it and be like, oh, that's ten percent of what we have, that's, that's not a big deal, we can do it. But we don't know what we have, you know? We always know we're in good standing, but how good is it?
Right, and the num, the number, the thing that's kind of in the back of my brain, I'm, I'm telling all the kids, put on another sweater, and I just click the furnace. At the price of oil, I know we, when we looked at our fuel costs...
We cut a lot of them.
Yeah, and this winter is, who knows?
I wish we could give you the original match to get this done because it's needed, but I'm...
But the more, more we reduce the, the match, the fewer, the less that he's gonna get.
And then, like Bobby said and I said earlier, we have to guarantee you whatever we give you and if you take the time and we, and the money's not there, then I just think it's wrong timing and too quick of a deadline. That's just my thought. I mean, as far as the package goes, as far as the work that needs to be done, I have nothing against the work that needs to be done.
If it was a different time of year, it's a no brainer that we say, okay, do it, we know where we stand.
Can I ask one, one question? I come, I'm getting a sense of, of where the, where the board is headed and I respect where you are. I mean, I, I get, I don't, I don't ever go writing checks out of my savings account unless I know what's in there, I, I respect that. If I hear back from Stephanie and Department of Administrative Services that American Rescue Plan funds can be commingled with Esser funds, unless I do what you suggested before, is there a willingness on the board for a consideration, maybe a discussion about whether American Rescue Plan funds, and I don't even know what you have left, could, could be considered as part of this project?
Well, the only thing with that, just, um, is chances are, if we can commingle it, it would probably be just like the Esser where it doesn't count toward the match, right? It, I don't, if they could let, if they let the town use American Rescue Plan dollars and that would count towards the match, I would say by all means, if we can take federal dollars and then, you know, ma, multiply that by fifty percent, um, that would be, that would be a no brainer for us. I, I have a feeling it's gonna be like the Esser funds where the, it comes off the top.
Right, I, I completely agree. I mean, and I think that, I mean, we, you know, you've seen the, the positions from Caves and Caps and I saw your email, the, our, our state reps. I would love to get an email tomorrow saying, you can do that and we're extending this deadline for a month, right? I mean, that, that to me would be, we'd be set, I mean, we would be set at that, at that point. Cause even the two hundred the board authorized last night would be our matching part, right? I think that, you know, anybody hearing this, please, contact your state reps as we have and, and ask for that dispensation, right? The, the, the other piece of this too, and then again, this is another pathway, might be if we, even if it came off the top, the two hundred of our Esser, whatever you could contribute towards from your ARPA, American Rescue Plan funds. And then if we could potentially look at, although I get very nervous, our Fund Eleven balance for a hundred, a hundred and fifty and at least get leverage that against some state, cause that would be LEA, local, local funds, right? Cause it means, put it this way, if it were two hundred Esser, two hundred ARPA, one fifty, our Fund Eleven balance, one fifty state, that's three, four, five, six, seven, doesn't get us all the way there, unless, cause more off the top from ARPA funds, I'm just using two hundred as a number, right? Gets us again to that place of thirteen units. And I'm, I'm just suggesting that, I know that this is not the way to do these things, but I'm only working under a very tight deadline and, and prepared to write this grant or not, right? Depending on, on people's sense of this.
A lot of what ifs.
Yeah, a lot of what ifs, it's, yes.
Well, it's typical federal money, they, they tell you to spend it, but they don't tell you how you can spend it.
Yeah, I wonder what the stipulations would be with using ARPA fund, like, I don't think we can say, well, we're gonna give you two hundred ARPA, two, a hundred and fifty of our, I, I got a funny feeling there's gonna be restrictions and what, how you can bring those funds together, I'm gonna guess.
That's what we're waiting for, the phone call back. That, that is our question to the state that we asked yesterday.
But I mean, even from the standpoint of, uh, like the town, saying, oh, the town will give you this many ARPA, this much regular funds, I don't know if, maybe we could give you ARPA or we could give you our funds, but we can't give you ARPA and funds, you know, something like that.
So just, just for a sense of time, it's, today's the sixteenth. Any decision would have to be made by the November thirtieth. Now, this board, if, if we're going, if we use American Rescue Plan funds, as you saw this, this evening, that would require us to hold a public hearing, which would have to be properly noticed. If we, if we do that, that's seven days, it's a, it's a seven day window to hold a public hearing. We would also have to have a special Board of Selectmen meeting in order to set that public hearing date, in order to even entertain that. So we're also up against the Thanksgiving Day holiday and so I'm just, I'm just trying to look like practically at a calendar. If we, if we held a meeting, I don't, you would, we would have to notice...
It would have, it's very tight, I don't know if we have the time.
And the other, right, and the other layer of this is that the value in doing all of that as quickly as you're talking about is also up against my need to get the Board of Education back together, to get them to take a position to apply Fund Eleven funds. Otherwise, we are not gonna apply for any state grant funds and hey, if we just wanna use our Esser funds and your ARPA funds and pay for the whole thing ourselves without, you know, the rush here is to leverage and, and get that fifty-one percent from the state with whatever we can put from it, put towards it, right?
Charles, how much do you have left from your Esser funds?
About two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And we're comfortable with the, the two hundred because we need the sixty-eight for the other position.
Right, yep.
So do you have to physically have the application to them on December first?
So I said, I was planning on eating turkey, watching a little football and writing a grant.
So geez, why do they do these things? Oh, I know why they do them.
It was the same with our steep grant, remember they announced the steep grant in, I, I forget, it was announced in July, it was due in August or something crazy and, uh, something like that. And we, and we, and I was before, actually it was in June, cause we did, we did a supplemental appropriation to fund that because they didn't announce it and then we were left scrambling. The difference being that was at the end of our fiscal year, so that was, we knew, we knew...
Ryan, what was the, the date and stuff that you had Michelle put in for the hearing?
I had, so this, uh, we had...
That's for this, right?
Yeah, so this is the resolution that I drafted and it had a, a public hearing, cause this would have to have a public hearing and a special town meeting for approval. And we selected, uh, November thirtieth at seven o'clock for the public hearing. I think it was seven ten for the special town meeting.
The deadline's actually in next morning, right?
The deadline, I mean, yeah, so, again, because we're, we're up against a time, five days notice for a special town meeting, seven days notice for a public hearing. So the earliest, and we're using the River East, which comes out on Friday. So the earliest that we'd possibly be able to do that would be with the following Friday, which is, uh, the day after Thanksgiving. And so realistically, this board always meets on Wednesday, which is why, you know, for consistency, you know, you don't wanna have a special town meeting on a Monday, you know, we would wanna meet on a, on a regular day.
Why couldn't we just do it the following Monday?
Yeah, that's a thing.
Because then it's a couple of days before the deadline and, I mean, it's not much, but it's a couple of days before the deadline.
But...
It's not a Wednesday, but, you know? Maybe by then he could get some answers from the state.
Yeah, I, I, what I would be, have done is write the grant and just be waiting for that one documentation that, that the funding was approved.
I hate to put you through that, Charles, but I mean, it sounds like you, you're gonna write a grant with some open spots where the figures go and then see if we can get this pushed through, see what the answers come out to be.
Yeah.
So this, am I, what, what's the board thinking? Because it's, that would be the, the fund balance that, that we would be, that we would be sending to a special town meeting. that, that we would be, that we would be sending to a special town meeting.
Well, I think if, because we, we see what they say about whether he can use that two hundred thousand or not as matching.
He can't use that as, that's, that's, that's off the top, and, and our, ARPA would be off the top as well. So we don't get a match for that, so if, if this board, you know, felt inclined to, to u- utilize ARPA for the HVAC pro- project.
Well, if he finds out he can move two hundred thousand dollars from somewhere else and replace it with the SIR's money, then he's got two hundred thousand matching right there.
Two hundred, potentially, again, yeah. Yeah, but then that one, unle- uh, the question before this board.
Right.
Is only wh- whether or not to u- utilize money from fund balance, that's, that's what we're talking about.
That's what the hearing would be.
That's, that's what this is, so if, it's either, you know, we, we can make a motion and we can send that to a public hearing in a town meeting, or, or we don't do that, but that's we are not ready, as Charles mentioned, we're still waiting to hear back on, on the Amer- if we can even commingle that, that ARPA fund. Um, and that would be a separate discussion if, if the board wanted to do that, which I'm, I'm open towards, you know, discussing that if we can do it. Um, but for tonight, the question is on.
If it's, if this is the question that I'm saying, though.
And Brian, can I, can I, I think what I'm hearing is, i- if you say no to the one twenty, I'm not done. I'm gonna continue to talk to the state, continue to see what I can do with the Board of Education and Fund XI and your idea tonight, which hadn't occurred to me, but I've gotta process that from an integrity, ethical point of view too, right? I don't wanna get in trouble here.
That'd sound cheap, but it's a show game.
Right, and, and, and we gotta be careful always when we do that, because, you know, we wanna be transparent about, about these things, but it hadn't occurred to me, and I appreciate the, the thought, I think your position tonight is, if you're gonna put the one twenty on the table for me, that's gonna send me in one direction for sure. If you're not, I'm not quite done yet, I still have a couple of weeks and a few more phone calls to make, and I may be back again talking to you about ARPA.
I would be more open to ARPA than this, because like I said, on, on this, we're shooting blind. We don't know what's there.
My, my fear is if we, even if we bring this to a public hearing, the first question the public is gonna ask is, do we have the money?
Yeah.
And we're gonna say, no, we don't know.
That's the first question I've been asking all night.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm uncomfortable with.
It's difficult, I mean, I, I, it seems like the absolute right thing to do, but, like you said, like you said.
You can't buy something and not know how you're gonna pay for it, and that's.
Right, if this were five months ago, it'd be a different story.
Or if it's in the springtime, it would be a different story.
Right.
This is just the worst time of year to ask it.
It wouldn't be this long, if it was a different time of year, this discussion would have been over with forty-five minutes.
Yes.
Hmm.
And then that's the only thing that's, I think we're all on board that it needs to be done, it's a great program, but we cannot commit something we don't know we have. And not like Ryan says, you know, we're in good shape, but. We don't know what kind of shape. Right, you know.
There's just been so, so many different kinds of money moving around this year, I.
No, but just like John said earlier, we did a lot of little nickel and diming, cutting fuel, cutting heating oil uh, in the budget.
Yeah.
And now heating oil is the highest it's been in years, or maybe highest ever.
Yeah.
We don't know what those numbers are gonna look like in the spring as what we have left over from this year.
Any other selectmen thoughts?
They're lousy about it, because I know it has to be done, but.
Yeah, we, we all agree with that.
Yeah, but you, how can you put out money you don't know you have or not?
Well. I'm just gonna go around, John.
You know where I'm at, yeah.
Bobby, uh, Mike. Mike, you with us?
No. I don't have a board, I don't have a board.
So, I think what I'm hearing is the consensus is to, is to take no action on the resolution.
Correct.
And if something, if something happens where Charles can come back, or even, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem if Char- if Charles went to you, Ryan, and, and had an epiphany tomorrow, and said, could we call a special meeting?
I don't have a problem doing that.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't think the problem though is our meetings.
Set a special meeting, you can always cancel it.
I think the problem is, is you gotta go to the public.
You can't set a new special meeting.
Yeah, so.
There's gotta be a drop dead, what's our drop dead date if we got an approval on ARPA? And we had to, like, turn it around, knowing that Charles could be sitting there with his MacBook while we're at the meeting.
I would say it was probably, right, that third Monday?
Yeah.
The third?
No, he doesn't know, no, no.
We have, because we have.
That Monday, that Monday.
That's what I said, the month.
It would be either the.
Third, Monday, the third.
No, so, so if.
I'm in the wrong month.
If we were gonna utilize ARPA, I would say it would probably be the twenty-first or twenty-second, we would have to know because on Monday, let's say, Charles, we had a, if, if Charles lets us know, you know, we can commingle the American Rescue Plan Act on Monday, we could set, this is all hypothetical, we could set a, a special uh, Board of Selectmen meeting for, uh, the twenty-second, and then at that, we would have to, I'd have to notice in the paper, uh, which would be, uh, we'd have to u- use the press for that, which is a little more expensive, that's why we typically use the River East. But if we got that in on the twenty-third, we could have a public hearing on the thirtieth, which again, would be the last day that we would be able to do that, I, and then again, I would have to double check everything, but I think that would be the, you know, the the drop dead, so, we would have to have a special Board of Selectmen meeting, and that would have to be on the twenty-second, and again, this would, this is a different question than what is presented for us, because and I think what I'm hearing is, if we were to go with that, you, both the Esser and the ARPA would not be eligible for the grant, so, the only, the only money that would be eligible would be the money from Fund XI, and even, even that is, comes with some, you know.
Challenges.
Challenge, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I, I, Ryan, I, I think what I'll do is I'll be back to you, and I know our, our board chair is here and, and paying very close attention and hearing this, and we've talked about this a little bit, um. Clearly, the board would need to take a position about whether to use Fund XI, so there's also a special board meeting that we need to happen there, so. I think it's not worth giving up yet, but I, I respect where you guys are with respect to not knowing what your fund balance is, and this being a very bad time of year, and this is why we do, you know, you can have something cheap, quick, or done well, and choose two, right, in, in this case, where I don't think we're done yet, but I, I may be back to you.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
And, and Laurel. Laurel, did you wanna say anything?
Um, no, I guess I, I did have one question.
Do you wanna come up and, yeah, you, I just wanted to make.
Maybe I should just talk to Charles about this later in the conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate all the conversation.
All right, thank you. All right, so we'll move on, uh, next up under new business is in authorizing resolution. Uh, our Emergency Management Director, Don Guin, is, is on Zoom, uh, with us, thank you, Don, for, for being with us this evening. Uh, and Don, uh, sent, uh, myself and our town clerk, Michael Tierney, this, this resolution, and uh, this is something we do every year, and this is a, an authorization, and, uh, so I don't know if someone would like to read it uh, into it, but it, this is, uh, this is just an annual form, we did this last year, and it's that time of year to do it again.
I'll do it.
Okay, just start with, uh, resolve, you don't need to read the, the certification.
Start with resolve, resolve that the Board of Selectmen may enter into, with and deliver to, the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management, Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolve that Ryan J. Curley, as First Selectman of the Town of Portland, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Portland, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. The undersigned further certifies that Ryan J. Curley now holds the office of First Selectman, and he has held that office since November sixteenth, twenty twenty, on a witness thereof, Michael Tierney, Town of Portland, town clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries, and thank you, Don, for, uh, for making sure that we get this, uh, authorized, and I do wanna point out that it's our, uh, one year anniversary, guys, so happy anniversary.
I forgot to send you roses.
I didn't get chocolates, what's going on?
So, one year ago, today, we were sworn in, and, um, and here we are, back at it, so. So we'll move on, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the twenty twenty-three Board of Selectmen calendar dates, uh. We're already looking ahead until, uh, the new year, so if, uh, if everyone just wants to, uh, review these dates real quick, make sure that there's nothing, uh, that is, uh, is conflicting, these are the, the first and third Wednesday of every month. And if you'll notice, there's only one meeting in the month of July due to the Fourth of July holiday. Uh, I think it's in the charter, I'm pretty sure, right, I'm like almost positive it's in the charter. Yeah, I mean, I think that would require a charter change. And if, if not, I mean, we could do a s- it would have to be a special meeting, if you held it at any other time aside from seven thirty. You don't like these late nights?
Is that a meeting?
I'm gonna have, if it's not in the charter, I'd love to have a special meeting to make it seven o'clock.
Hey, we got some guys running our equipment over there, probably a homework they do when they go back home, so.
Uh, they do it in afternoon, sure, before they come here.
These guys get all their homework done ahead of time.
Just like I used to do.
I don't know about that.
Ryan, I don't see any conflicts.
Okay, okay, so, um, would someone like?
Do we gotta read it?
No.
I'll make a motion, we accept these twenty twenty-three, uh, selection, Board of Selectmen schedule as noted.
As presented, okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ralph, any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, great, we'll move on to refunds of excess payments, Bobby, would you like to do one of those?
First time for everything?
Get ready, Ralph.
I have a motion for refund of excess payment, Richard D. Vericchio, seventy dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., seven hundred and sixty dollars and seven cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, Nicole Basil- Fissa Locato, and Joseph Fissa Locato, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and twelve cents.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed, any abstention, motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, Toyota Lease Trust, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifteen cents, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents, four hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I will second all of them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries, thank you all. Next up is the status and committee reports, uh, just briefly, I have just a couple things, actually, maybe only, oh, no, I have two things, so. So, I am very pleased to report that after many, many months of back and forth with the Department of Public Health and seeking approval to enter into this contract agreement with our engineering, uh, company to look for our own water source, uh, I finally was able to, I got the award letter, we had the executed, uh, uh, agreement about a month ago, and then we finally got the award letter, and I signed that contract, and we actually had our first meeting with GZA on Monday. And it was a very good meeting, we talked about, uh, basically, uh, GZA has, uh, has done some homework as far as where the town has options to look for water. And they have a map, an overlay map of the town, and there's, it's speckled with many different areas where, uh, water is very, very likely, so it's one of the benefits of the Town of Portland is that we have a very large aquifer that runs through the center of.
The old, the old riverbed.
The old riverbed, exactly, yep, and so not only that, but we talked about, uh, even there's a fault line that runs through, uh, our town as well, and so both of those options have a high potential of yielding, uh, water. And so right now, what we're doing is, uh, we, we're looking at every option that's available with this, and and our, uh, assessor and our town planner, myself, we've been, uh, working on getting GZA an overlay, Dan Beret's been helping, uh, get an overlay of all the town-owned properties to GZA, because we first wanna look at what the town already owns, because that would be by far the cheapest option, potentially, if we own a piece of property in town that's in GZA's highlighted targeted area, well then, maybe we can focus on that for, uh, the test well, or one of the test wells, and so the, you know, the name of the game right now is finding water and, and making sure that we, it has a high capacity yield, that it would be able to, uh, be sustained even through droughts, which, uh, which is a concern, because obviously, as you know, we, we just experienced a drought over the summer, and we did have to turn our, our own well off for a period of time because the water table was too low, so we wanna make sure that, you know, any, any wells that we look at, if, if that's our sole, uh, water source, that, you know, we would be able to, uh, endure the, the drought times as well. Um, and so that's something that GZA, you know, is committed, uh, to do, so, and it's not only that, but we also wanna make sure that whatever water we find is close to our existing infrastructure, because it is very expensive for every foot of, uh, pipe to pipe that water. So, there's a lot of variables, but, uh, GZA is, um, is committed to, you know, moving very quickly at this point, and, um, so it was a really good meeting, uh, you know, it was myself, Jim Tripp, who's the Water and Sewer, uh, Chair, was there as well, Ryan O'Halpin, our Public Works Director, and, um, Bill Lynch, uh, from the Water Department, so it was a, it was a good meeting, and, um, we're excited to, uh, to keep moving with this, and, um, yeah, so hopefully, we'll have some news to move, they said they wanna start, uh, hopefully getting, uh, somewhere by the end of December because, um, then the ground gets too cold, it gets too hard, so, uh, that's our, that's our time to.
Drill, baby, drill.
Yeah, so, so.
So, is, are they gonna, like you said about the infrastructure, are they gonna look for something closer to the water system now? To drill first?
Yeah, so all that, there, that's all being factored in, so, uh, and, and so there's other options too, that, like I said, we're looking at every option, um, you know, because we wanna make sure that whatever, we just need to get high quality water for our residents, and we need to get it as affordable, affordably as possible, I mean, that's the goal, no matter where, where we can find it, I don't really care, I just, that's what we want, and, um, and so we gotta do, uh, hopefully better than what we're, uh, you know, doing currently, and at least then, we would be able to have, uh, some, uh, you know, some say in what the increases are, as opposed.
We, we would have a better understanding and be able to plan what the increases are, you know, it's, it's under our control then.
Right, yeah.
So, so we are working on that, I'm pleased to, you know, have that move forward. Um, the other, uh, thing I, I wanna say is I attended the grand opening of Fabian's Pizza.
I saw you with the ribbon.
And, oh, you saw that, was that you beefing? Oh, I was on Facebook, all right, oh, okay, cool, I, I haven't been on, uh, social media since then, but, um, it, it was, it was really nice to, uh, attend another grand opening in town, and certainly wish Clement and, uh, his employees, uh, uh, continued success down there, I, I had lunch down there, uh, and it was good, it was nice, so, those are my updates tonight, so I'll turn it over to, to Ralph here.
Okay, well, I'll just add a couple items from the Water and.
Okay, well, I'll just add a couple items from the Water and Sewer and, um, Sean could certainly add if I miss anything or thinks is important. You know, you did mention about the, the well being shut down, and I think I did walk in the middle of that discussion, but it sounds like they're feeling comfortable that we're gonna be able. The, the goal always is to hit one hundred and forty-six million gallons from MDC because everything beyond that costs us extra. And their, uh, the fear was with the well being down, that'd be a problem, but they're feeling pretty comfortable that they're gonna be able to get very close to what we want to be at. So, that's good. Um, and the other thing that was, certainly, there was a lot of talk about GZA, as you noted. And, um, the other thing we did was noted about with regards to the rates, um, which everyone's always concerned about, obviously, is that they're hoping that they're going to hear sometime next month about what the rates are, and the, the general feeling is that we think we'll have another favorable rate coming from MDC. Let's hope it doesn't, he play that out that way.
So, further right, that would be the third year, because I, I believe it's been a one percent increase a- and another one percent.
Yeah, it would really be nice, because we, we, we did some aggressive on our Selectman Committee. We looked at some very high rates, because we thought, you know, that's what we were looking at, based on the previous four years. So, another, you know, another low rate gets us closer to another solution, so let's hope that's where they land. I don't know if there was anything, was there anything?
One other thing is they found a pretty substantial water leak down on the, uh, airline. Red Tech was taking a house down, and they needed the shut-off, and the curb box was covered by a tree, so they went into the road, and they estimate about twelve thousand gallons a day. And they don't know how long, because it was just going right down through the trap, through the shot rock, right back down to earth, down back to the river. So, that was a line that was from Bank Street originally, and the.
On the tracks.
Yep, the last two were the Old House and then, uh, Meriden Boat Club.
Yep.
Which, they were going to tie them into a new line and hook them up, so. So, that was pretty, pretty big leak they found, so. And then there was discussion again about, they do need more manpower because we do have the equipment to find leaks, and we do have the equipment to calibrate our water meters and, and take a look at those, but we are lacking manpower to do that. So, that is something that is probably gonna be coming up in the next budget session. So, I think it's something we should really take a look at if we want to try to get some of these costs under control.
Has the town ever, Ryan, do you know, have we ever done any real serious succession planning in our staffing? Because I know Water has got a lot of people that can retire anytime. And, uh, do we have any thought of how we're gonna backfill that?
That's a scary thought.
We talked about that Monday night, me and Ralph. It's like, uh, you have one guy out sick, and then if your other guy in the Water Department gets, then.
You're done.
You're done, only have two guys.
Yeah, so we, you know, we do run a very, you know, tight.
Lean meat machine, right?
And, I mean, and I think that just is something that's happened in, in all municipalities.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
You know, and, um, so there's pros and cons to that, and, you know, we wrestle with that every budget season. And, um, certainly, I do think, uh, completely agree that, you know, we, we should look at succession planning, and we should, we should be prepared. I mean, uh, certainly, you know, this board has seen the past year, the way, uh, they don't call it the Great Resignation for nothing. You know, we've, we've seen a, you know, a higher-than-normal turnover, unfortunately, uh, and for a variety of reasons, but there's grace without. Or my case of faults. Um, so, yeah, I, I think that's something that we need to consider. We'll have to talk maybe further during budget.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's, it's just especially that, that department and the limited number of staff is just, every time I think about it, it's frightening.
Well, especially we had that joint meeting with Water and Sewer, and the main topic besides the meters was leak detection. If we can, we have equipment now that we can detect the leaks, we should, we should be looking for them and stopping it, because it's just money.
We just don't have the manpower.
Yeah, I know. It's just, it's just money flowing down the drain.
Literally.
Yeah. So.
Okay. So, with that, we'll move.
So, I got, I only got a couple of things. I just have the parking right now.
Yeah.
So, we did, uh, at the meeting on Monday, there was discussion about, uh, a capstone project to, uh, a young man's gonna have a fun run in Toy Drive on December third at the, uh, park complex at nine AM. That's, um, it kinda evolved as the meeting went on, so, anyone's interested, they should look for some further details. There was also discussion about an Eagle Scout project to add some tables at, at the park. So, that sounded promising. Uh, and there was discussion and planning about the, the parade and the tree lighting that'll occur on, uh, on the. Yeah, December fourth.
Exactly, I just remembered.
So, the parade's at five, the tree lighting's afterward, but they are having, trying to have events for, well, the businesses on Main Street will be open prior to that, but they're trying to encourage people to use the businesses on Main Street. And, um, the last thing is, um, and it's probably every town's hitting this, but our basketball numbers are very low, so we're gonna be challenged by, uh, forming teams. So, anyone out there that has a third through an eighth grader that wants to play basketball, please go out and sign up, because, uh, the numbers are gonna be tight. And that's it.
Thank you, Ralph. I know, I'm looking forward to the, uh, tree lighting, and the parade is back. I want to thank, I know Jesse Ravicki's been working very hard, and also Michelle Donahue has been, uh, working on that, and, and EDC has been, uh, really trying to push the, uh, the shop local on Main Street, you know, that, you know? So, it's something that we want to encourage, uh, so, look forward to seeing everyone there. And I, I did hear a rumor that Santa will be making an appearance, so.
You want to hear an interesting anecdote? Somebody a couple weeks ago gave me a copy of a news clipping from, I think it was the Middletown Press. There was a time many, many years ago when a sophomore college student was asked to fill in for Santa Claus one night and sit in the sleigh. And I, I, I said, oh my God, I can't believe they did that. Now I got the real beard.
That's good to know, though, Chuck.
Shouldn't have told us that. Ryan, you know, I think I have the School of the Sole East Committee, they, uh, canceled the meeting for November. It'll be in December, because they're waiting for the architects to come back with some more information.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I think, um, I think Tom, uh, has been working with our, uh, Bond Council on, on, you know, numbers and.
That was one of the questions they were looking at as well.
Yeah, so, uh, hopefully, we have more answers, uh, soon on that. Any other status and committee reports? Now, we'll move to public comments. Is there anyone who want to thank the, uh, the, you know, the diehards in the audience here? Who's made it through? Um, anything in the channel? All right, thank you.
Don, just thank you for, Don Goen, just thank the board for.
I saw that, Don, oh, yeah, Don Goen did thank us all. Thank you, board members, for your support to the Emergency Management Department programs for the third fiscal year. Thank you, Don. All right, we'll move to Board of Selectmen General Informal Discussion. Anyone have any, anything this evening? Look over this line.
What's the update on Brownstone Avenue with the remediation?
Sure, actually, good question. I'm glad you, I'm glad you asked, so.
I know, should be wrapping up soon.
A couple things on the Brownstone Avenue. Uh, we've been waiting on, uh, some fill. So, we were waiting to find clean fill for the project, and I, I really wanted to push getting, um, clean fill. There were some other options that we could use, some, it's called like Bud Soil, which is basically, uh, a brown field that's cleaned, um, but I really didn't want to put cleaned dirty dirt.
Taking a lot of time to clean it to put dirty dirt.
So, and I do want to thank, uh, Selectman Manny Sean, uh, helped us out because he, uh, knew a contractor over in Glastonbury. Uh, and if you notice, if you drive through South Glastonbury and you look to the right, there, there's a lot of clearing going on, and some of that dirt is our dirt now. That's earmarked for, uh, the town of Portland, and, uh, we were able to get a favorable, um, a favorable price for the town. So, we have clean, it's been tested, and the soil is clean, and that will be coming here, and, uh, quite a bit of it, too. So, um, so we're just waiting, I think I have a meeting with DECD and Ty and Bond, uh, where we're just gonna go over some of the final pieces of it, but the remediation will be, um, should be completed very soon on this phase, and now you do remember, we did apply for a second round, uh, of grant funding through DECD. That should be announced, I think it's like the first or second week of December, so relatively soon we'll know if we've been awarded any additional funding for that. Um, DECD did ask some questions from our application, which is, you know, a good sign.
Means they're reading it.
It means they're reading it, and they have questions, so, uh, you know, we'll see, I, I hope, because, you know, uh, we want to keep, keep moving on that.
I think they're, I, from, from the history of that project, I think we're on their radar as a, a town that's really doing something good. I, I hope they want to keep that moving, so.
Yeah, we're not slacking around with it, which is I like, we just keep, keep making them happy.
And I did, uh, talk with, um, Dan Bertram on Friday, and we had a good conversation. So, he's still working on getting, um, you know, some timetables for us. Uh, he was talking about December, uh, having something for the board, so.
Are they, uh, their work right now getting ready to pour a, a foundation? There's a lot of ex- activity going on down there.
They're not ready yet for the foundation. Uh, again, that's, that's looking more like, uh, December timeline. Uh, they have been doing work, I, I think Pete, our building official, just got the plans, uh, just got the completed plans. I think the, uh, the initial plans that they had sent over for the foundation, they didn't have, I guess, like the piping that goes underneath the foundation, and so, we were waiting on that. And so, all that has to get reviewed and, and whatnot, but they are, they are working. Um, they are, uh, sometimes working too much. Uh, they were starting too early, uh, the other day, and, uh, and a resident on Perry Avenue brought that to my attention. So, we want to make sure that, that they're doing the work, but that they, that they start at seven AM when they're supposed to. And so, uh, I did mention that to, to Dan when we talked, and I haven't heard any complaints since, so, uh, so. But, yeah, no, progress is, is ongoing.
It's an awesome piece of property when you see it cleared off, it's really pretty amazing.
They were, that was one of the other things that were brought up in, uh, the Water and Sewer. Uh, Ryan O'Halpin was telling us they had a, replaced, they're replacing a hydrant, because they're going down, and they were down, what, sixteen feet, I think, with the, the trench box, and they were putting in the drainage pipe in the, almost had some trouble with a, uh, a pipe coming out, but they were, he was afraid. They called Brian and said, we might have a nine-one-one call tonight, but they were able to fix it. So, they're replacing the hydrant instead of using the old one, and they're making a lot of headway, it's good to see.
Anything else?
How is it going with the new Riverfront Access by the Stilltown plant?
Uh, good, the Riverfront Access Committee met, uh, actually yesterday evening. Uh, their group of volunteers were down there doing some light brush clearing a couple weeks ago, and, uh, I know they're very anxious to get going. Um, we have to submit an NDDB application to DEEP. This is one of the things that I've been focused on, is making sure that we have the necessary approvals in order to use this land, because the land is along the river, and it has been identified by DEEP as a, as an area where there's wildlife, and, uh, of course, we need to look at what is there as well. And that's what this NDDB, it's a natural database, natural diversity database application. And so, what that does is, we send that to DEEP, and we, we already have. Uh, we sent that back in October. Normally, I think there's a sixty-day turnaround, so we should get that back next month. That's gonna tell us what is in the area and what kind of mitigation we may have to do. I think we're expecting some mussels that may be in the water. Uh, I know Lupe, who, uh, the Chair of the Committee, is, uh, was told there were, there were mussels. I'm hoping it's not a very long list. I know, uh, that we looked at a piece of property by the fairgrounds a couple years ago, and there, there was a laundry list of, of, it was, it wasn't just tiger beetles anymore, there were spotted owls, there were, you, you name it. Um, there was some kind of insect that I think lives on Gildersleeve Island, and there's only like two places in the world that this, this specific insect.
And it calls us home.
And, and so, um, yeah, let's hope that this is not as, uh, special of a, of a place, and, and we get some permission to.
Run over by the settlers two hundred years ago.
But, we can't really do much still, because I'm still waiting on the contract from the state on that again. Uh, that was in review, um, so, once, once they execute that, then we'll have that three hundred thousand dollars to, uh, to continue to work on that. All right. Yeah, I like that. Okay, uh, so we'll move on to follow-up items. I don't have anything tonight, unless anyone has anything.
Just, uh, real quick, I think when we get into maybe the new year, we might want to think about, um, town charter review.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
I think, um, you know, actually, Ralph, Ralph and I had a conversation on this, uh, yesterday, briefly. And so, I think that's something that we can certainly do. I, I, what I would ask is that, you know, this board read through the town charter, and, um, and maybe kind of, you know, think of some ideas that, that you would want specifically, um, looked at. And that's something that, you know, we can, we can certainly look to form a charter commission in, uh, in the new year, but I, I would like to give them, you know, kind of some guidelines, and so, uh, as to what, what to kind of focus on. And, and there, there are plenty of things in there that, you know, could be updated due to time. I mean, our charter is almost, uh, twenty years old, the current version, so, you know, there's some things in there that, you know, dollar amount thresholds that I think could, could probably be raised a little bit, and, uh, we could look at, you know, there's a number of things that you could look at, say, is this, you know, the best? You gotta be careful with charter commissions, because, you know, any change has to be approved by the voters, and it would have to be on the ballot as, as a referendum, and, and typically, if you do too much, voters tend to reject the changes, so you want to be careful with what you propose and, and not, you know, change too much. You gotta strike a right balance of what you're looking to do, so, but, yeah, absolutely.
An all-or-nothing thing?
No, you could, um, have a question.
Multiple questions?
You have multiple questions. Cromwell just had a, uh, they, I think they had three questions on their, their most recent ballot. Two of them passed and, and one of them failed, um, and, uh, so, yeah, you can split up. Many towns split up with questions.
Okay. Um, the only thing I have to follow up, could we look into the new microphone, what it would be? Especially because coming into next year, we could look if it has to go into the budget or not?
Okay.
Because I hear we, we still have complaints that it's just not clear online all the time.
Well, I do want to point out, look, look at how far away your microphone is.
Look how close mine is, Bobby.
Well, look how close I have to sit the mic to use it.
I, you know, if we just, you know, I think we might even be able to save a lot of money if we could just, you know.
See, I got yelled at by Dave, so I'm right here.
And then we'll just keep Mike in the dark over here.
Is this better? Enough, so I'm right here. I don't want to get yelled at.
But, um, but, yeah, no, we can, uh, look for ways to, uh, make sure everyone hears you.
But, yeah, I, I think, he's got a good point, we should.
Yeah, we do want to make sure that people who are with us, uh, on, on Zoom, and one of that being, Mike, uh.
Can you hear me?
Have you been able to hear us? It's a good test.
Roger that.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so we'll talk, yeah, all right. All right, and if there's nothing else, uh.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
How come it's always down?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, have a good night, everyone, thank you. All right, have a good night, everyone, thank you.